Good evening, everyone. I will call the May 3, 2017 Board of Selectmen meeting to order. Mr. Owen, do we have a need for non-public tonight?
Just a brief matter relative to real estate.
Okay. Up through the approval of the minutes from April 19, 2017.
Mr. Chairman, I have two changes. The first one is on page 12, second paragraph, and it should say, "The Wentworth Watershed Foundation," you can scratch "Lake," "Lake" is not in that title, and same on the next paragraph, "It's the Wentworth Watershed Foundation," so "Lake" comes out. And on page 13, the bottom paragraph, I'd like a sentence added. It says, "She thought removing some crosswalks in the middle of the block could be a solution." And that's all I have.
Any other board members have any corrections?
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes as amended.
Questions been made and seconded. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? We have a series of public hearings tonight, so we'll start with temporary outdoor events permit. Wolfboro Area Recreation Association to hold Nickfest on July 15, 2017, from 11:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m. at Brewster Academy Monument Field.
Hi.
Hello, everyone. So, yeah, this is our 11th year of Nickfest, no, 10th, yeah, 11th year of Nickfest. We moved to Brewster Field about five years ago. Nothing is going to change from the past years that we've had it at Brewster. So, yeah, as always, it's a fundraiser for the Nick. It's the same weekend as it was in the past. And are there any questions for me?
I will close the public hearing.
Any other ones in the audience have any say about this? I'll close the public hearing. Board members?
Mr. Chairman, I just want to point out, and I know you know it, that weekend, we have quite a number of things going on down there. We have the All Saints Fair, and we also have the Kids Granite Triathlon. So, we may want to look at a need for more police officers just for traffic flow. And I'll bring it up again under the Kids Triathlon, because I think there are some police officers there, but I think it's going to be difficult to get people in and out.
Yeah. I do believe that the triathlon ends before Nickfest. Is that... Yeah, that's right.
Yeah, but it's still...
Yeah.
I'm concerned of all the volume of all these things going on.
Definitely.
But I just want to point those two out for you.
Of course. Thank you.
Anything else from the board? If not, I'll entertain a motion.
I make a move that we approve the issuance of a temporary outdoor event permit to the Wolfboro Area Recreation Association to hold Nickfest on July 15, 2017, from 10:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m. at Brewster Academy Monument Field. Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you.
All right. Thanks, guys.
Next, public hearing is Child Advocacy Center, Carroll County, to hold a 1K Run Walk on June 24, 2017, rain date June 25, 2017, from 2:00 p.m. to 5:00 p.m., starting at 136 South Main Street.
Hello.
If you just state your name for the record.
Sorry, my name's Margot Skelly. And I'm here with Beth DeAngelo from the Child Advocacy Center. The event would start at 136 South Main Street and end at 51 North Main Street. Do you want me to go through the route? I don't know if that's helpful or not. I think you guys already have the map. Yeah? Okay, so we're going to start on Main Street here, and then you take the right onto Glendon, down to Lainer, excuse me, Union to Lainer, and then back out Glendon to Main Street. The 100 percent of the proceeds would go to the Child Advocacy Center for their operating fund.
I'll open the public hearing. Members of the audience, any questions or comments? Seeing none, all. Close the public hearing. Board members?
Yeah, I have a couple of them. The planning department said a parking plan, so we need to know somehow how you're going to address parking. And I also was wondering, I'm assuming they're going to be running and walking on the sidewalk?
Indeed, yes.
Okay. And I saw that they were going to be in groups in 10. Are you going to put them in waves? So, in other words, I'm thinking of people trying to get into businesses down there.
Absolutely. Yes, waves of 10 was our thought, to do that.
10 minutes apart, 5 minutes apart?
I would say 5 minutes apart.
5 minutes apart.
And we were going to have a volunteer from the Child Advocacy Center at each of the turns to kind of facilitate people who may not be from the area, just to let them know where we're going, and then back out.
And are they going to be going, you see them going single file or two or three abreast? I'm just thinking that we've got businesses and people going in and out of businesses. I just want to make sure that they're...
I would say probably only two wide down the sidewalk.
Okay.
Anything else for these two? Not entertain a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the issuance of a temporary outdoor event permit to the Child Advocacy Center of Carroll County to hold a 1K Run Walk on June 24, 2017, rain date June 25, 2017, from 2:00 to 5:00 p.m., starting at 136 South Main Street. Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any other discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Wolfboro Parks and Recreation Department to hold Wolfboro Bike and Walk Day on May 12, 2017, from 6:30 a.m. to 10:00 a.m. at various locations through town.
Hi, Christine Collins, Recreation Director. So, this event has been going on for a few years. It's just to help encourage people to bike and walk, which we find most people are already doing. But we work in collaboration with the schools, so they, most kids will get dropped off at a certain point where they meet up with teachers and will walk down. And then we reach out to various businesses. We work with Huggins Hospital and have a table set out there for breakfast, and then we have one at Cape Park as well. And then we go around in the van, and if we catch people walking, we'll beep the horn and stop the van and give them a snack. So, it's a pretty fun day.
Any questions?
I'll open the public hearing. Any members of the public have any questions? Seeing none, I will close the public hearing. Board members? I'll make the motion to approve the issuance of a temporary outdoor event permit to Wolfboro Parks and Recreation Department to hold Wolfboro Bike and Walk Day on May 12, 2017, from 6:30 a.m. to 10:00 a.m. at various locations through town.
I'll second that.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any other discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. Next, Parks and Rec to hold Movies in the Park from June 16, 2017, through August 25, 2017, every other Friday from dusk until 11:00 p.m. at Foss Field Soccer Field.
Again, we do this every summer. We pick every other Friday night, and we hold a movie at Foss Field. And it starts at dusk, so as we begin the summer, it's a little bit later, and towards the end of the summer, it wraps up a little bit earlier. It's a good time for families. They love it.
The public hearing's open. Is there any members of the audience that have any questions or comments? Seeing none, close the public hearing. Board members?
Yeah, I just have one. Do you have a rain date? If Friday rains, do you go over to Saturday? Should we...
Yes, yep, sorry. Yes, so the rain date is always Saturday.
Okay. I thought that was the case.
And just once last year, we couldn't have it at all, because it rained both days.
Well, the way we're going these days, I wonder...
Any other comments or questions?
I'll make a motion to approve the issuance of a temporary outdoor event permit to Wolfboro Parks and Rec Department, hold Movies in the Park from June 16 through August 25, 2017, every other Friday, with rain dates being on Saturday, from dusk until 11:00 p.m. at the Foss Field Soccer Field. Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any other discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Next, we have Wolfboro Parks and Recreation Department to hold 4th of July fireworks on July 4, 2017, rain date of July 5, 2017, at Brewster Academy Athletics Field.
Again, this is just another event we hold. We have the fireworks with Brewster. They work really well with us. And it's on the 4th, and we'll have the rain date as the 5th.
Open the public hearing. Any members of the public have any comments or questions? Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing. I know last year, the fireworks went off a little bit later than previously thought due to Marine Patrol not being able to keep...
Yes, so we're on top of it this year. So, what happened was there was some lack of communication, I think, on our end, so just the Marine Patrol had to move all the boats that were there. So, this year, we'll be on top of it.
There's no date, I mean, no time on it.
I believe it's 9:30 is when it's... Let me just see if that's the published date.
That's the time it usually goes off, around 9:30.
I'd say that's pretty close to when they watch.
Yeah, that's what my recollection is, is that's pretty much when it goes off.
It just was no time on it.
Yep.
Yeah, it's 9:30.
Okay.
Okay.
If there's no more questions, I'll entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve the issuance of temporary outdoor event permit to the Wolfboro Parks and Rec Department to hold the 4th of July fireworks on July 4, 2017, at 9:30 in the evening at Brewster Fields, with a rain date of July 5, 2017. Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any other discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Wolfboro Parks and Rec Department to hold the Granite Kid Triathlon on July 15, 2017, from 8:00 a.m. to 12:00 p.m., starting at Brewster Beach.
This is a fun event that we usually fill up. We have to turn people away. They don't like it, but it's a safety thing. So, it starts at Brewster Beach. The run goes to Clark on Clark Road, and then the bike is on Clipper Road, all the way to the Eagle Tree. We do get police officers to help us with that. We do have a lot of volunteers out just to kind of direct, have people know where they're running and biking. And it's a fun event.
I'll open the public hearing. Is any members of the public have any questions or comments? Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing. Board members?
Yes, I have a comment. This is where I was talking about, you have All Saints Fair going on, you got Nickfest starting up, and you have these people coming out of Clark Road, and I know you have some police officers. Can you put one up on Main and Clark to help those people get out? That's a hard road anyhow, and I think if there's a police officer there, that would be a help.
Okay.
Thank you.
Any other comments from the board? Okay, I'll make the motion to approve the issuance of a temporary outdoor event permit to the Wolfboro Parks and Rec Department to hold the Granite Kid Triathlon on July 15, 2017, from 8:00 a.m. to 12:00 p.m., 12:00 noon, starting at Brewster Beach.
I'll second that.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any other discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. Next, we have Wolfboro Parks and Rec Department to hold Lake Wentworth Sailing Regatta on August 5, 2017, wind, rain date, August 6, 2017, 12:00 p.m. to 5:00 p.m. at Albee Beach and Lake Wentworth.
This is a collaboration with the New Hampshire Boat Museum, and we've been doing this for a few years, so we usually get a lot of our sailing people to enter it, so it's pretty nice.
Okay, I'll open the public hearing on this. Members of the public, seeing none, I'll close the public hearing. Board members?
I'll make a motion to approve the issuance of a temporary outdoor event permit to the Wolfboro Parks and Recreation Department to hold the Lake Wentworth Sailing Regatta on August 5, 2017, rain date, August 6, 2017, from 12:00 noon to 5:00 p.m. at Albee Beach and Lake Wentworth.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Wolfboro Area Parks and Rec Department to hold Granite Man Triathlon on August 19, 2017, from 9:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m., starting at Kerry Beach.
This is our Granite Man that's been going on. This is the 36th year. If you've never been to it, I encourage you to come out to it, because it's a pretty awesome event. We have about 325 participants and their families, and it's just, it's a great race to see people cheering each other on, and families have been doing it. They do it in groups, so it's really nice. We do have to get permitting from the state and for the water as well, so we put those in already. And it's a great benefit to the Kingswood High School. There's a scholarship that comes out of it, and that's the whole purpose for this race.
Okay, I'll open the public hearing. Any members of the public have any comments, questions? Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing. Board members?
Make a motion to approve the issuance of a temporary outdoor event permit to the Wolfboro Parks and Rec Department to hold the Granite State Triathlon on August 19, from 9:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m., starting at Kerry Beach.
I'll second that.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, aye.
Aye.
Next, we have Wolfboro Parks and Rec Department to hold the Turkey Trot 5K on November 18, 2017, from 9:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m., starting at Railroad Depot.
This is the 26th year for this race. We have a 2K, which is for the little kids, and then we do a 5K for the adults. We collaborate with the Lions Club, so they've helped volunteer and man the stations, the water stations, and help with traffic as well. And we also have a police at the end of where Main Street is and the railroad station connect.
Okay, I'll open the public hearing. Members of the public, any questions or comments? Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing. Board members?
I'll make a motion to approve the issuance of a temporary outdoor event permit to Wolfboro Parks and Recreation Department to hold the Turkey Trot 5K on November 18, 2017, from 9:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m., starting at the Railroad Depot. Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any other discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you. Wolfboro Public Library to hold children's musical concert on July 13, 2017, from noon to 4:00 p.m. at Cape Park.
Good evening. I'm Joyce Davis, representing the library. And for many, many years, the library hosts a summer reading program for children in the area, and part of that program is delivering special events to the kids, whether it's a craft program inside or storytellers. Let's see, we've got Birdhouse Building this year, lots of different activities, and we're, the first of the activities will be a concert in Cape Park with the unfortunately-named Toe Jam Puppet Band once again this year. We've had them here before and pulled in a lot of families. It's a really nice event. It will be staffed by library personnel, and we'll have some volunteers. We've done it before, had no issues, and just a really good time for everybody.
I'll open the public hearing. Any members of the public have any comments or questions about this event? Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing. Board members?
I'll move to approve the issuance of a temporary outdoor event permit to the Wolfboro Public Library to hold the children's concert on July 13, 2017, from 12:00 noon to 4:00 p.m. at Cape Park. And I'm assuming you don't want a rain date?
Actually, we've booked the Great Hall for a rain venue, should that occur.
I'll second that.
Motion has been made and seconded. Any discussion from the board? Seeing none, all those in favor, aye. Opposed? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Back Bay Water Skiers, Inc. to hold 29th New Hampshire Open on June 24, 2017, rain date, June 25, 2017. 37th Lakes Region Open on July 22, 2017, rain date, July 23, 2017. 26th New Hampshire Championships on August 5, 2017, rain date, August 6, 2017. And 16th New England Solom Championships on September 9, 2017, rain date, September 10, 2017, at Back Bay Park and Bridge Falls Path.
Good evening. Phil Swatfield for the Abenaki Water Ski Club. That Back Bay Water Skiers is our incorporated name, but we are DBA Abenaki Water Ski Club, as you most of you probably know. When you're reading that, Luke, it's hard to believe this is our 37th year in Back Bay. I guess that tells the times going by quite quickly, at least for me. I'm not sure about anybody else. Once again, we've got three tournaments that are, the first three tournaments, the one in June, and the one in July, and the one in August, are three event tournaments, meaning solom, tricks, and jumping competitions. And the final one in September is the New England Solom Championships. That's a solom-only tournament. We usually have the best water skiers from New England and the surrounding areas, even as far as New Jersey and New York at times, to come to our tournaments. And the last couple of years, we've increased the number of young kids coming into the events. So, we've got a lot of families now with younger kids, a new generation of skiers, so it's pretty fun to watch, and it's nice to see the kids out there doing, in a lot of cases, all three events. So, we run from 8:00 in the morning, and usually go solom, and then tricks, and then jumping later in the afternoon. And along the Bridge Falls Path, you can really see everything right up close and personal. So, and I might also add that Back Bay is the only spot in New Hampshire that has a jump and a solom course in the same spot. And it's also the only place in New Hampshire that has jumping tournaments. There's no other jumping tournaments that you can go to in the state. So, it's one of the things that we think that is unique for Wolfboro, which is, we hope is a good thing.
Okay, I'll open the public hearing. Members of the public, any questions or comments? Seeing none, I will close the public hearing. Board members?
Somebody has to do it. I'll read it. I move to approve the issuance of a temporary outdoor event permit to the Back Bay Water Skiers, Inc. to hold the 29th New Hampshire Open on June 24, 2017, rain date, June 25, 2017. 37th Lakes Region Open on July 22, 2017, rain date, July 23, 2017. The 26th New Hampshire Championships on August 5, 2017, rain date, August 6, 2017. And the 16th New England Solom Championships on September 9, 2017, rain date, September 10, 2017, at Back Bay Park and Bridge Falls Path.
I'll second that.
Motion has been made and seconded. Any further discussion from the board? Seeing none, all those in favor, aye. Opposed? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Next, we have Life Ministries Food Pantry to have a table set up for sales, concert tickets, raffle tickets, and seek donations July 28 through 30, 2017, from 9:00 a.m. to 7:00 p.m. at 22 South Main Street.
Yes, this is a part of an annual summer event that the Food Pantry has to raise funds. It's one of a couple of different events during the year that they have. And there's three parts to this. We have a raffle, we have sale of concert tickets for a concert that will take place on July 30 at the Congregational Church, and we also seek donations. So, this goes all weekend long, in the churches and also in the communities. If there's any doubt about the need, in 2015, 142,039 meals were served to 645 families and 1,434 people. I don't have the figures for 2016, but I do know they were up a bit.
Did you just state your name for the record, just so we have that, too?
I'm sorry?
Just state your name for the record.
Bruce McCracken.
I'll open the public hearing. Members of the public, any comments or questions? Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing. Board members?
Make a motion to approve the issuance of a temporary outdoor event permit to the Life Ministries Food Pantry to set up a table for sales of concert tickets, raffle permits, solicitation of donations on July 28 through the 30, 2017, from 9:00 a.m. to 7:00 p.m. at 22 South Main Street.
I'll second that.
Motion has been made and seconded. Any further discussion from the board? Seeing none, all those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
We have a first application for discretionary preservation easement for historic agricultural structures under RSA 79D. It's a barn located at 332 North Main Street, owned by Elizabeth Nordbeck and Bruce Robinson.
I'm Elizabeth Nordbeck. I, thanks to the New Hampshire Preservation Alliance, we're applying for an easement. The barn is probably one of the oldest in town, built around 1800. It's a very large barn, a Yankee barn, which means the doors are in the front, and it's about 80 feet long. Sometime in the late 1800s, a second barn was added on to the end of it, 45 feet long, so the total is about 125 feet in length. It has a very interesting history. The people who owned the fifth lot in Wolfboro, on which this resides, were the Folsoms. Blake Folsom was the founder of Blacks, and the First Christian Church was founded in our living room in 1812. So, there's some interesting historic connections with the property and with the barn. In 1911, a famous mystery storm, of which Mr. Bowers, I know, knows, lopped the top off the barn and threw some outbuildings around, and the barn was subsequently rebuilt, but in the meantime, became the subject of a number of postcards of that disaster, which also affected some other houses in town. It remained in agricultural use through the 1930s, but in the 1940s, when the Folsoms left and sold it off, the whole property, and especially the barn, became part of a thing called Camp Ashbrook, which was a camp that catered to, shall I say, troubled youth from the Boston urban area. At that time, the whole property went all the way down to the lake. Camp Ashbrook didn't last very long, about half a dozen years, and after Camp Ashbrook went defunct, the property more or less reverted to non-agricultural residential use, but the back building, the back part of the barn, had deteriorated quite a bit, having been renovated for the use of the camp. I became owner of the property in 1983, and my husband and I have been trying to more or less bring it back to agricultural use and make sure that the barn is not going to go anywhere anytime soon, short of another microburst. So, I'm happy to answer any questions. I have pictures. You can see it on page 55 of this book that everybody's familiar with, and it's also mentioned in the history of Wolfboro.
Okay, I will open the public hearing. Members of the public, comments?
Hi. I'm here in favor of you. Oh, good. Thank you. My name's Ann Blodgett, and I'm speaking for the Wolfboro Heritage Commission tonight. Maggie gave me some nice notes. I'll keep them brief. The Wolfboro Heritage Commission recommends approval of the two applications for barn preservation easements under NH RSA 79D. The preservation of both these buildings... The preservation of both these buildings helps maintain the character of our community, provides the public with visible reminders of our agricultural past, and safeguards an important segment of our architectural heritage. Thank you very much.
Any other members of the public? You now close the public hearing. Board members?
Yeah, I just have one question, and I'm looking at the tax card. And my understanding is we're going to, if we approve it, a barn easement on a barn, two-story, with a basement, and a barn, just a plain barn that doesn't have a basement.
Correct.
Those two, and they're connected.
And they're... It's like one barn. They are essentially one barn, but they were built separately. Yep, that's exactly right.
I'm just making sure that when we do this, that the tax card... We're talking about both of those structures. I think it's great that... I went to that New Hampshire Alliance workshop.
Yeah, it was super.
Yes, and I'm glad you were able to get the information you needed to preserve these barns and get a little bit of a tax break.
Absolutely.
I move that after having conducted a public hearing on the application of Elizabeth Nordbeck and Bruce Robinson for discretionary preservation easement for a historic agricultural structure located at three thirty-two North Main Street, Wolfboro pursuant to RSA CH seventy-nine D, the Board of Selectmen finds that the discretionary preservation easement provides a demonstrated public benefit pursuant to R.A.S.C.H. seventy-nine D colon three, section two, because it provides the following public benefit: One, there is scenic enjoyment of the structure by the general public from a public way. Accordingly, the Board finds that the proposed preservation easement is consistent with the purposes of RSA CH seventy-nine D, and the Board shall take steps to acquire discretionary preservation easement.
Mr. Chairman, I would like to make an amendment. I know we only need one of the three conditions, but I think that we should definitely put number two, and there are also the structure is historically important on the local, regional, state, or national level, either independently or within the historic district, because I think it meets those two criteria. So are you, Dave, willing to add that to your amendment?
Yes.
Thank you.
I'll second that, then. You can reread it.
No. No way.
The motion has been made and seconded. Any other discussion from the board? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you very much.
Thank you. You can come see it on the hospice house tour this summer.
We will.
Next, we have the barn located at four fifty-eight Center Street, owned by Heidi Cogan and Christopher Koche.
Good evening, I'm Heidi Von Gritz Cogan. My other half is working in Boston. We purchased four five eight Center Street, also known as the eighteen-ten house, back in January, after a long year of working with multiple banks and struggling to get the whole package together. But this barn, you're probably all familiar with, this long, ninety-one-foot-long English barn that has the big antique sign on it, and it still has it on there. I hope that you did get the pictures that I submitted to Ann. Okay. English dairy barn, according to the prior owners and what I've gleaned from the Clark Museum, it was... The original structure was started in seventeen sixty-seven, before the town became incorporated. It's a three-story plus a loft barn, post and beam, as typically they were in those days, mortise and tenon. Many of the hand-hewn beams are still in the barn, and they're in very good shape. There's been some not-so-good renovation inside to add staircases, which has compromised some of the structure of the barn, but we expect to be able to rectify that. Some of the beams that are in the barn were cut by a sash mill, and we believe that was the sash mill on the Smith River. So they probably dragged them up with the cart and so forth right to the property on four five eight Center Street. The barn, as we know it, it was used as a dairy barn till about nineteen fifty. The Allen A Resort purchased the property somewhere around nineteen forty. I don't have the exact dates. But originally, it was a small barn, and then in eighteen-ten, when the front house was built, there were thirty-one feet added to the barn. And you can clearly see that delineation between the two structures inside the barn. I've been told this is the oldest building in Wolfboro. I've also been told that the barn is second in age to the Tuttle's Red Barn in Dover. And according to internet research, the next oldest barn in New Hampshire is the Lawrence Barn in Hollis that was built in seventeen eighty. It just amazes me that this building is still standing there. And it's like, it kind of wiggles with the wind a little bit, but it's solid as a rock. I've been up on the third floor, and it's solid as a rock. So it was part of the Allen A Summer Resort, the four hundred acres. And now what we have left there is just under eight acres. And it was converted to an antiques barn probably in the late nineteen seventies, maybe nineteen eighty. And we do know, from reliable town sources, that the Royal Governor John Wentworth rode past the barn on his way to the King's Wood. Somebody told me that. We believe it's scenic enjoyment by the general public. It's on twenty-eight. You can't go down that road without seeing that big, huge barn. There was a metal roof put on there some time ago, and that really helped preserve the structure inside the barn. It was agriculturally used till about the fifties, and of course, it's got antiques. But we have approval to plant our vines out behind the barn and in front of the barn to establish the Winnebago Sockeye Winery. We have... We're working with the federal government now to get the Newfoundland Vineyards moved to Winnebago Sockeye Winery. That's a lot of red tape that we're going through right now. We also believe that it's a history lesson for anybody who comes into the barn. And we know that children won't necessarily visit the tasting room at the back end of the barn, but the antiques that still remain in the front of the barn are a great history lesson in and of themselves. And just taking a look at all that structure that was hand-hewn and hand-cut gives anybody a good idea of how hard those folks worked. So the restoration needs that we're looking at right now, there's several support piers underneath the front end of the barn that we have to tip those upright. They're sideways. Overall, it needs a coat of paint. And the back foundation wall is ninety-one feet. And there is stone on top of the original granite blocks. The stone is crumbling over the years. Cement has been put in there, and it's just really haphazard. We've had two structural engineers come in, and they say it's fine for folks and antiques and so forth, but there is a shift in the barn, and we'd like to get that done in the next year or so. We've already worked with the antiques vendors that are in there to set new rules for use of lighting and extension cords. We've pulled out a lot of old wiring that didn't go anywhere, and we had no idea what it was for. And, you know, we expect to do a little bit of curbside appearance, flowers and so forth, just to make it look nice. Our intention is to keep it on the outside looking just like it does. Improve it, but certainly not put any overhead doors or any, you know, unsightly attachments to it, because we love the history of the barn. Any questions for me?
I'll open the public hearing. Is any questions from the public? Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing. Board members?
Yeah, I have one question. You are asking for this only on the one barn, the big one. You're not the small one in the back.
That is correct. The small one in the back is probably like a nineteen sixty barn.
Those are both underlined. That's why I wanted to make sure that that was clear.
We also hope to apply for the New Hampshire Farm of Distinction designation next year, once the vines are starting to grow, so that'll be a little feather in our cap.
Anything else from the board? If not, an entertaining motion?
I move that after hearing... Having conducted a public hearing on the application of Heidi Van...
Von Gritz.
Von Gritz and Christopher D. Couch for a discretionary preservation easement for the historical agricultural structure located at four fifty-eight Center Street, Wolfboro pursuant to RSA Chapter seventy-nine dash D. The Board of Selectmen find that the discretionary preservation easement provides a demonstration public benefit pursuant to R.A.S. Chapter seventy-nine dash nine-three-two, because it provides the following public benefit: One, there is a scenic enjoyment of the structure by the general public for the public right of way. And two, the structure is historically important on a local, regional, state, and national level, either independently or within a historic district. Accordingly, the Board finds that the proposed preservation easement is consistent with the purpose of RSA Chapter seventy-nine dash D, and that the Board shall take steps to acquire a discretionary preservation easement.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any other discussion from the board? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Next, we have the bulk vote, which contains the weekly manifest, property tax, credits and exemptions, and raffle permits.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, we had an additional light raffle permit application come in.
I move that we add the raffle permit for the Wolfboro Cooperative Nursery School to the bulk vote.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Just a motion to accept the bulk vote now?
So.
Second.
All those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Next, we have appointments, a few remaining vacancies on town boards and committees.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I just thought we could use this opportunity to announce to the public and the listeners that we still have some vacancies on town boards and committees. There's a vacancy for a full member on the town's Energy Committee. And we have a couple of vacancies on the town's Pathways Committee. And also, the Fisherville Committee has a few vacancies, three vacancies, I believe, at the present time. So we need more volunteers.
Absolutely. Under new business, we have a new date for Veterans Account Event. Chief Rondo has requested a change in the previously August fifth date and is now requesting the new date of August twelfth, two thousand and seventeen, for the temporary outdoor event permit.
Want to address the board?
I'm a Ms. Artis in the part. So, good evening, I'm Chief Dean Rondo, and I sit on the board of Veterans Count, which is a division of Easter Seals. So after we got this approved and I took it to the board, I was reminded by my fellow Army officers on the board that this conflicts with the MOA, the Military Officers Association, event on Jamaica Island out at Portsmouth, which is when we get with all our other brother and sister officers in the service, and we have a lobster bake. So obviously, we have to move this. So out of respect for the lobster bake, so we decided that the twelfth of August, essentially that next week, would be good. So I promise you, this is the last time. So there you have it, twelfth August, if you'd be so kind. Thank you.
Any other motions to that effect?
I'll make a motion to amend the board's previous approval of the Veterans Count Event to a new date of August twelfth, two thousand and seventeen. Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any other discussion from the board? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Arbor Day proclamation. Parks and Rec Department requests the board to approve the annual Arbor Day proclamation for two thousand and seventeen. This year, the Arbor Day will be celebrated on May fifth. And I will read the proclamation, Arbor Day proclamation, two thousand and seventeen. Whereas in eighteen seventy-two, Julius Stowing Martin proposed to Nebraska Board of Agriculture, "A special day be set aside for planting of trees." And whereas this holiday called Arbor Day was first celebrated in the state of Nebraska on April tenth, eighteen seventy-two, more than a million trees were planted throughout the state, and Arbor Day is now celebrated throughout the nation and the world. And whereas trees reduce the erosion of our precious topsoil by wind and water, cut heating and cooling costs when planted correctly around our homes, moderate the outdoor air temperature, clean the air, consume carbon dioxide, and produce oxygen, provide habitat for wildlife. And whereas trees are renewable resources, giving us paper, wood for our homes, fuel for our fires, and countless other wood products. And whereas trees in our town community... In our town increase property values, enhance the economic vitality of business areas, and beautify our community. Whereas trees, wherever they are planted, are a source of joy and spiritual renewal. Whereas Wolfboro has been recognized as a Tree City, USA, by the National Arbor Day Foundation for thirty-five consecutive years, and desires to continue its tree planting practices. And whereas the Wolfboro Parks and Recreation Department tree warden Kirk Titus and the Crescent Lake School fifth-grade class are hosting an Arbor Day tree planting event at Bean Park at ten A.M. on May fifth, whereas trees for planting have been donated by Bartlett Tree and Wolfboro Parks and Recs. Therefore, we, the Board of Selectmen of Wolfboro, New Hampshire, do hereby proclaim May fifth, two thousand and seventeen, as Arbor Day in the town of Wolfboro, New Hampshire, and urge all citizens to celebrate Arbor Day and support efforts to protect our trees and woodlands. And we further urge all citizens to plant trees, to gladden the heart, and promote the well-being of this and future generations. And this is dated April twentieth, two thousand and seventeen.
I'll make a motion to approve and sign the Arbor Day proclamation of two thousand and seventeen. Second.
Did it say Cape Park? It's Bean Park.
Motion's been made and seconded. All those in favor?
I have a question. If it... It says it's going to pour rain. Do you do a rain date on that?
No, we actually... We were talking about that. We are putting a column in the school because they bust the kids out. So there's a couple options. The following Friday, we have something going on. It's really school-dependent, what they can do. So we might just have something at their school, or we might... We don't know yet. So we're waiting till tomorrow, because, you know, too far in advance. But we're going to come up with a plan.
Okay.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
National Police Week proclamation.
Good evening, I'm Robert Brennan. I'm a resident here in Wolfboro since two thousand and six, full-time since two thousand and twelve. I live on Maplewood Drive. I was a peace officer in the Bay Area, California, for thirty-one years, eight at the rank of police chief. A lot of people that I talk to say, "Why did you move back here?" I actually grew up here and came back because it'd be like seven million people living around this lake in the Bay Area, if you've ever been there, and that's why I moved back. So spending eight years as a police chief, I sat at the staff table for eight... Those eight years, along with Public Works and the Building Department and everybody else, I had a comment here about that. But since you don't have a staff table, I think it's probably going to be fall on deaf ears. So those days at the staff table, for me, were not the most positive productive being a police chief, but they were certainly necessary. And I noticed the police chief here and the fire chief. Is he awful? So there you know what I'm talking about. So, I'm not here to complain about the roads and the traffic and the parking, although Berrywood and Maplewood could use a little work, after since I have your attention. But the subject I'm here to talk about is, I was looking for some words, is not necessarily a good topic or a positive in nature, but it is very important, and that is National Police Week, which is held May 11th through the 17th this year in Washington, DC. It is attended by about 25,000 to 40,000, mostly police officers and family, and within that week, designated May 15th as Peace Officer Memorial Day. That was created in 1962 by President Kennedy to honor all those officers that were killed in the line of duty during the past year. Each state has its own memorial, talking to the chief just briefly here, New Hampshire does have a memorial. Most states will hold those, their own memorial adjacent to the National Memorial, so people that need to go to Washington can do so. In 2016, and this was just updated, I had originally 135 officers were killed in the line of duty in 2016, and it has gone up to 144 is the official number now. And the reason that keeps going up is, and this is probably close to the heart of the fire chief, is we are still claiming victims from 9/11, and as each one of those officers or firefighters pass away, they are added to these memorials, so that's important. In 2016, 64 peace officers were killed by gunfire. The highest number was 73 in 2011. Unfortunately, California usually leads the nation in officers killed. They had 12 officers killed in 2016. Fortunately, New Hampshire has lost none, but I have lived here long enough that I have seen the processions for police officers killed in New Hampshire. So, nationwide, that's 12 police officers a month. That's way too many. So, what I'm here for, and I found this, this will be the first, is I'm, I intended to do this a little bit more informally. I was going to go to the Police Commission meeting and present my flag, but they canceled the meeting, so, I rushed to see if I could get on the public comments here, and then seeing that maybe I might be outnumbered, which I don't think I'm going to be, I decided I should get on the agenda because if I'm going to present something that's of value, it usually has to be approved by council, and so, what I'm here to do is, I want to present the police honor flag to the Wolfboro Police Chief. This flag is three by five, with a Stars and Stripes design, white or navy, white with navy or black stripes, accented by a bright blue stripe, symbolizing the thin blue line in the middle running parallel with the others. The flag represents not only peace officers killed this year, but past calendar years, all those that have sacrificed their lives and will continue to sacrifice their lives for the people of this town, state, and country they serve and protect. I'm asking the Board of Selectmen to allow the police chief or his representative, but he is here, to accept this flag. I would also ask that this flag be flown at Town Hall during the National Police Week, May 11th through 17th, or minimally, on that day, May 15th. Now, seeing the fire chief here, if the council would approve it, I would like to purchase and present a firefighter honor flag for the police chief, similar in design with a red, thin red stripe in it for him to post when he sees fit, or during the same time if this, this flag, so, and that's why, if with the selectman's approval, I'd like to present this flag.
Do you want a picture? Wait a minute.
Dave Bowers is going to do it.
Got it.
While the chief is doing that, I always told people when I was in the police office, this is my line was, "It's a job, not a vocation, I'm not a priest." When they stopped paying me, was when I stopped showing up. Well, I didn't show up anymore after they stopped paying me, but, but it's hard to get this out of your system after 31 years. I did go to Washington, DC, and went to the Peace Officer Memorial there. It's not on the mall, or really even close to the mall, it's by the Feller Courthouse. It's a very understated memorial, and I think which symbolizes the understatement of most police officers in this country. They stay in the background, they do their job, and they do it well, but to stand there, and in my letter, I did lose a police officer, killed in the line of duty while I was a lieutenant in Palo Alto, California, so, it stuck near and dear to my heart, so, being the first time, I was surprised the first time that this has been done. Every year in California, we have a big memorial in Sacramento, thousands of police officers come there. I'm hoping, chief's invited me for coffee, that we can get something going in the state of New Hampshire, or the tri-state area here, to help push that forward, so we can remember these, these police officers in the future. I also, thinking about it, we have two polls, we have one here and we have one at the Police Department, so, if the, if the decision is made by council, you would like to fly the flag here and at the Police Department, I will purchase another flag, so that can be done, along with the firefighter honor flag to present to the police chief, so, any questions?
I want to thank you for being willing to donate those flags. I personally would like to fly one here at Town Hall and up at the police station. I think that's appropriate, if, if you're willing.
I am very willing.
And, and thank you for the one for the Fire Department also. That's very nice of you.
You want to continue with the motion?
Yeah, I can continue with a motion.
Want to read the, let me read the proclamation?
Go ahead, and then we'll make a motion for the flags.
Whereas the Congress and the President of the United States have designated May 15th as Peace Officers Memorial Day, and the week in which it falls as Police Week, and whereas the members of the Wolfboro Police Department play an essential role in safeguarding the rights and freedoms of the citizens of Wolfboro, New Hampshire, whereas it is important that all citizens know and understand the problems, duties, and responsibilities of their police department, and that members of our police department recognize their duty to serve the people by safeguarding life and property, by protecting them against violence or disorder, and by protecting the innocent against deception, and the weak against oppression or intimidation. Now, therefore, we, the Board of Selectmen, call upon all citizens of Wolfboro to observe the week of May 14th through the 20th, 2017, as Police Week, with appropriate ceremonies in which all our people may join in commemorating police officers past and present, who by their faithful and loyal devotion to their responsibilities, have rendered and dedicated service to their communities.
I would like to make a motion that we accept the honor flag for police, and that we fly it, and if we have to, at the Town Hall and at the police station, the week of National Police Week, May 11th through May 17th, 2017, and that we also accept an honor flag for the Fire Department.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any other discussion from the Board? Seeing none, all those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Closed. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Next, we have a update, Sarah Silk, with New Hampshire Department of Environmental Services' Household Hazardous Waste Program.
Yes, I'm Sarah Silk. I am the Site Coordinator at the Lakes Region Household Hazardous Product Facility. I've been doing hazardous waste for the town of Wolfboro for 28 years. We have, as you know, a season that goes from the 3rd Saturday of May through the 3rd Saturday of October. We also do two collections in Alton, the 2nd Saturday of July and the 2nd Saturday of September. We have three medicine collections, the 3rd Saturday of June, the 3rd Saturday of August here in Wolfboro, and the 2nd Saturday of September in Alton. And I just want to touch on our regular season, and then Dean and I would like to explain a new program we're starting in 2018. Our hazardous waste collection, as you know, if you have anything that you think might be flammable, poisonous, dangerous in any way, automotive fluids, anything that herbicides, cleaning products, whatever, bring them to us. We're open from 8:30 to noon. If we're ready to roll, we'll actually start at 8:00. We ask, however, that people do please go to the solid waste facility, and they already have them, the passes which are free, free, but you need one before you come to visit us. They have the book up until Friday. Each pass is good for up to 10 gallons, counting the cans. We take no latex paint, we take only oil-based paint. If you have more than 10 gallons, fear not, we can pull you another pass, because our mission is to take this stuff and get rid of it. We've had a lot of response to our medicine collections, and Dean Rondo has been very supportive, he's been our contact person. Now that he is chief, he's kind of handing that job over to Captain Livy. However, we've always had a lot of concerns and requests between our last medicine collection in August and our next one, the following year in June. Depart, um, DEA, Department of Drug Enforcement, easy, thank you, has one usually in April, sometimes in September. Last year, it was the last Saturday of October. They're not guaranteed, but they have been pulling together, they, they had one year where they, they canceled some. But we have a lot of requests for medicine collection in the winter, and I don't know if it's perhaps because it was especially icy off and on this winter or not, but the pharmacists in town had a lot of requests for how can they get rid of their controlled drugs, which we know are an extreme problem in society in general. We've been working collaboratively, I have, with Sarah Connolly, who's a pharmacist here in town, and our chief, Rondo, about how to take care of that problem. We have also worked with the Episcopal Church, and starting in 2018, we will be initiating a mid-winter medicine collection, which will be the 3rd Saturday of February. Knowing what winter's like, we have a snow date for the following Saturday, which would be the first day of school vacation. And I just would like Dean to just quickly tell you how he's going to help us out with this, and I guess you all know about the importance.
So, just to bring you up to speed, and I don't know if you saw the press releases from our recent DEA drug collection, but there, there should be, hopefully, will be a photo in the paper of our drug dog guarding stash, which was approximately, which is approximately 150 pounds of collected pharmaceuticals, and that's actually pretty impressive. That's the largest haul that we've had, six boxes, all were transported up to Troop E, to the DEA Collection Site after our drug collection. So, what Sarah is talking about is really needed. It's obviously apparent to us because the volumes of the medicines coming in have been increasing year after year. Last year, at the, at the hazardous waste site, we had some large, very large collections there indeed. So, the mid-winter program would essentially run just like we do during the summertime, except there, there won't necessarily be the hazardous waste aspect to it, it'll be simply the pharmaceuticals in the collection. So, the controlled narcotics would come in, there would be police officers there, they would be inventoried and identified by board-certified pharmacists, they'd be immediately turned over to, to the collection bucket, separated from the vast majority of the controlled pharmaceuticals, and at the end of the collection, they would be essentially inventoried and turned over to Wolfboro Police, and we would secure them for destruction at a later point in time. Sarah?
Yes, and we will have a pharmacist, in fact, I believe Sarah Connolly is already committed to that date for us. So, this would be our 11th year of doing medicine collections. We started out as a pilot program for NERC, Northeast Recycling Council, and we have continued, and first it was once a year, and now we do three times a year. And if anyone at home would like to mark their calendars, our medicine collection will be June 17th, August 19th here in Wolfboro, and September 9th in Alton, and please, try to bring them on those days. We cannot accept controlled drugs at any other time. And then, of course, if you get a 2018 calendar, you can mark the 3rd Saturday in February. And I think I'm up here for the next item as well.
I have a question. You can just bring regular drugs that aren't controlled also, or do you want only controlled drugs?
No, we will take all drugs, whether they happen to be something that's expired. Very frequently, people get drugs, and then they have to get something else, and they find it's incompatible, we take those. Unfortunately, people, in order to save money, get a three-month supply, and sometimes drug interactions occur, and so then they've just generated a large quantity, and it may not be controlled, but we take everything. We take aspirin, we take vitamins, we take herbals, we take over-the-counter, and we take all prescription drugs, and we're happy to take whatever you have. We get an average of a plastic shopping bag per household, an average. That accounts for the one or two people that come in with one bottle, and it accounts for the people that come in with three shopping bags full, but it's important to take those and make sure they're disposed of safely. It's not good to flush them. Most everyone in town does not have sewer. If you flush them into your septic system, it can very likely pop up in your well or someone else's, and we certainly don't want them laying around. And we take pet meds as well.
Thank you very much for that. Next, we have the grant agreement with the New Hampshire Department of Environmental Services, the amount of $3,185.
Yes, this is the DES grant that we apply for every year. They run a fiscal year, although my budget runs a calendar year. So, this grant will actually cover the hazardous waste collections going from July of 2017, August, September, October, and when we reopen in the spring, it will cover the May and June 2018, and it's based on population. We do get a little better return than someone that does a collection once a year because we have multiple collections and multiple towns. And I believe Mr. Owen has given you the motion that we require, and then the town has to have Pat Waterman add all kinds of authorizations, and you need to be certain to mention who will be signing the contract. Thank you.
Thank you. I'll make the motion to approve holding household hazardous waste collection events at LRHHDEF facility on selected dates in 2017, further to authorize the town manager to apply for a grant in the amount of $3,185 from New Hampshire DES, to sign the contract grant agreement, and to expend the funds to run the household hazardous waste collection events.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any other discussion from the Board? Seeing none, all those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Closed. Thank you. We have a deed conveyance from the town to Sawmill Marina, next.
Mr. Chairman, I'm going to step down.
Good evening, for the record, I'm Roger Murray, and I'm here for the quitclaim deed signing on behalf of Sawmill Marina. This conveys 19 square feet of Wood Avenue on Back Bay to the Marina, which, as was discussed at the public hearing a year ago, April, allows them to meet their setback requirements. There's a condition that they maintain. There's a condition that they maintain the area. They agreed to put two picnic tables there. The picnic tables are there, and we were to compensate the town in the amount of $1, which was, I believe, memorialized by a picture of Dave Owen and me in the Granite State News.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
I had town council review this quitclaim deed document, and he says it's fine. The board had the two required public hearings last year in April, I believe it was, and so it meets all legal requirements and it's set to go.
Anything else from the board? Can make the motion to approve and sign the quitclaim deed, the conveyance of a small parcel of land from the town of Wolfboro to Sawmill Marina condominium, and also to sign the accompanying form CD-57-S to report this conveyance to the State of New Hampshire Department of Revenue Administration.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any further discussion from the board? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Okay, thank you. Board members, have you got old business to go over? Any other business?
I have a little note. I just want to remind viewers that a number of years ago, several, a number of us put out a booklet called Nothing Finer About the Town of Wolfboro, the 250th anniversary. And booklets are now for sale at the Chamber of Commerce, is that right, Mary? For $5 each, which is a discount, and the Chamber gets something, the Wolfboro Strack Society gets something. They make very nice gifts, are colorful and very interesting. Why don't you stop by the Chamber and get one?
And they're also for sale down at the collector's office here in the town hall.
They're also for sale at the, here in the town hall.
Anyone else? Town managers report?
Yes, I have a few things I'd like to report out this evening. One, some of you may have noticed that the DPW started and then stopped work down at the dockside parking lot last week that was on the sewer line replacement project. And with the high lake level, they got into a lot of water and were causing a lot of turbidity in the lake. And they decided they needed to pull the plug on the project, and they're going to go back to the drawing board with their engineers and probably try it again later in the year when the water levels lower in the lake. Mr. Ford will be here to talk to you about that at your next meeting. The Budget Committee had their first meeting since the town elections last Wednesday evening, and they voted to reelect John McDonald as their chairperson, and Bob Tougher is their vice chair, so no change there. They did bring up the topic of the fire hydrant fees, which you'll recall that they cut last year, and offered to discuss those with the selectmen. I told them, well, we're going to be doing a full water and sewer rate study this year, so let's wait until we see how that turns out before we sit down and talk to you about the fire hydrant fees again. Here at the town hall, we're having some work done. Last week, the elevator lockout system was installed in the elevator out here, so we don't have to worry about people wandering around in other floors of the building when the building's being used for events like this evening's meeting. Also, the security shutters for the offices downstairs on the first floor have been ordered. They'll be installed in about four weeks. They'll be installed in the evening after the offices close, so it won't be any disturbance for the public. And lastly, the clock faces on the clock tower, the numerals and the hands are going to disappear next week, we believe. The contractor's going to come and remove those and take them to his shop so that they can be regilded with the gold face painting. And then they'll be reinstalled, and that'll probably be around or shortly after Memorial Day, when it all gets done. So that'll repair the damage that was done to them during the construction process here. And Primax, our insurer, is paying for all of that except the $1,000 deductible. The townwide cleanup day is this Saturday, I believe. I don't know if it's pouring rain out, if they're going to have to reschedule that also, but DPW plans to be making the plastic bags available down at the DPW garage. I think Gala and some other organizations are cooperating to make that happen. I believe in your packets, you had an invitation from the First Baptist Church. They are having an event on Saturday, May 20th, and they are inviting a representative of the town to be there and to give them greetings from the town, I guess. I wanted to see if anyone was interested in volunteering for that event.
That's my grandson's birthday, so I can't. It's in, oh, no.
I can do that, that's fine. Put me down.
Okay. I'll advise them that you will be attending. Also, the Wright Museum is having a reception on May 18th, and they've invited all of us to attend. I've already RSVP'd for myself. I can do that for any board member that wants to attend.
I would like to go.
Okay. Anyone else?
It's the 18th at 5:30.
Okay, well, let me know, and we can get you signed up for that. From the assessing department, we had a couple of things. They did a press release for the public to be aware that, starting this week, they're going to start their cyclical data verification, where they update the values on one quarter of the properties in town. And so they'll be doing inspections, and if people see people from Granite Hill assessing in their neighborhood, that's what they're doing. Also, we received notice from the Department of Revenue Administration as to the town's new total assessed value. And you'll see that it's slightly over $2 billion, more or less where we've been for a number of years. Two, $2,548,941, the assessed value of the town of Wolfboro, all properties.
I just finished an addition on my house, so I think I just--
Oh, okay, good, good. Well, we appreciate that very much. Thank you. Yes.
It's up for the barn.
And also, we had from the tax collector, I think this is in your packet, she sent you the compilation of the 2016 tax liens that she has now had placed on properties that are in arrears for 2016 taxes, and it came to a total of unpaid property taxes for 2016 in the amount of $217,452.77 that have been leaned now for taxes.
Can I ask a question? I read that document quite carefully, and the majority of it has to do with Wunne Pusaki Drive and the defunct construction. What is the situation with Wunne Pusaki Drive? Are they going to reapply for anything, or?
They haven't been in touch.
I feel sorry for them, you know, as we all do for the one--
I feel sorry for them. Take the money off.
At some point, those, all those properties are likely to be taken for tax deed by the town. I think that's what they're waiting for at this point.
I'd like to mention something which is not a secret. The very interesting situation, Bucky Malanson developed Cricket Hill, and in his, he forgot to, there's a communal section at the end of Shipmunk Road that belongs in undivided interest to 30-some people. Bucky's been paying taxes on it, but doesn't want to own it, and he can't sell it because it's undivided interest. So he came up with a brilliant idea of just not paying any more taxes on it, and the town will then take possession of it. So about a year ago, one of the residents there rounded up the neighborhood, and they said they'd spend $6,000 on upgrading this property. But our Conservation Commission went and looked at it, and I was with them, and you were there, Lou, and they voted against it. So what's going to happen is the town's going to be getting a piece of property in two years that isn't improved because the Conservation Department doesn't want a $6,000 gift. So I think the Conservation Department, and I love the Conservation Department, probably revisit that because you could spiff it up and you could also accept it from Bucky as a gift, as you're going to get it anyway, and do something about it. There is no public area on Cricket Hill. I don't live there, so I have no vested interest. The nearest one is Cherry Beach, which really is in the park. But this is a nice property where you can walk your dog, have picnic table, and I think it's something the town might want to consider doing. In fact, if you want to put that on the agenda, I'd like to make a motion or something.
Well, having coordinated the town's response in that matter before, having referred it to the Conservation Commission, I recall that when they take, went out there, took a look at it, they found that it had been clear-cut by Mr. Malanson, so they didn't feel that it had any value as a conservation property.
It's a, first of all, it isn't completely clear-cut, but, you know, you're going to get it anyway, so why not have it, why not have some picnic tables and have some landscaping done free of charge? That's what I was saying.
Well, I think we can put it over to Dan Coons again, just have him do a review of it.
Okay. Sure. I think we'll, we can just, you know, we'll ask Dan Coons, Conservation Department ahead, to review it again and come back to us with the thoughts on the property. I do remember going there as well, and so it'd certainly be reviewed again.
I'd like to visit it when they do that, if you put me on the agenda.
Okay.
Committee reports. Brad?
Yeah, let's see. About a week and a half ago, we had a Friends of Libby meeting, a long meeting. There were a lot of discussions about getting the programs up and running for this coming season. And then yesterday, we had a Wolfboro Community TV meeting in the morning where Timothy brought us up to date on where he's at with some of the improvements they're doing and programs and things like that. And last night, at the planning board meeting, we had a very lengthy meeting. We didn't get out of here till after 10:30. Let's see, Paul Zimmerman had an approval for a six-unit building down off of Pine Street, and then Goodhue and Hawkins Marina was in for a, basically a site plan review. They're changing around a little bit of what they want to do with their main showroom building from what was approved a couple of years ago. And that was continuing on to, a week from last night, and it'll be continued on. So that was it for me.
I went to a zoning board of adjustment meeting, and that's all I have.
I met with Dave Owen with the nursery school to talk about a new lease for them. I went to the Special Events Committee of the EDC, and we reviewed last night in Wolfboro, are having conversations about a fall festival, and I was trying to get the Special Events Committee to help with Fisherville. I'll see if I've been able to do that. But I would also like to, and I think these people are in the audience, I have something on the Water Summit and Ann Blodgett from the Lake Wentworth, you want me to, Wentworth Watershed Foundation would, yeah, do you want to come up and say anything about it? Okay, and Peter?
Thank you for the plug, Linda. As you know, and I've spoken to as many of you as I could get to, in this very room on May 13th, starting at 9:00 a.m., the Wentworth Watershed Association will be putting on a water summit. This is the first, and we hope maybe there will be more. The entire community is invited for no admission charge, thanks to some very generous sponsors. And we're thrilled to bring you Sam Evans Brown from NHPR and other notable speakers. Let's see if I missed anything. Don Kretschmer has been key in producing this, and we're going to talk about everything water and how it relates to the community, and hopefully leave with some deliverable solutions that we can work on together. Hope you'll all be there. Thank you.
Thank you.
I have one other, and I'll see if Mary would like to come up and talk about the Dexon Dock event this weekend. Instead of me doing it as my committee report, you probably can give a little more information.
Thank you very much, Board of Selectmen. And yes, on Saturday, that's this Saturday, May 6th, all day long, it's close to 20 different businesses who are taking part in this first-ever Wolfboro-area Dexon Docks party. So we're excited about that participation, and we encourage everyone to come out. It's just really get excited about getting out in the warmer weather. I'm going to say warmer because it's certainly not that warm this evening. And then excited about the anticipation of summer here in beautiful Wolfboro. And there's, it happens to be Derby Day on Saturday as well. So for example, some of the restaurants have special Docks and Dex refreshing beverages and some food that kind of tie into the Derby Day as well. And there will be our local radio station, WASR Broadcasting Live, right outside of the railroad station. And thanks to the support of the Board of Selectmen, we have Goodhue and Hawkins offering free boat rides around Wolfboro Bay during the Dexon Docks party on Saturday. And just the businesses, even if they weren't necessarily officially signed up, there is a learning curve with the first-time-ever event, and we just want people to get out and see all our businesses and explore, even though you've lived here maybe for some time, or if you're new, explore what's here and available so that you can be ready for the summer. Thank you.
Thank you, Mary.
Thank you. I had no meetings as well. Questions from the press?
Questions from the press?
[inaudible]
Entertaining motion at this time to, I mean, sorry, we got public input. limited to three minutes per resident, not to exceed 15 minutes. Any members of the public here to speak to us tonight? Okay.
I'll make a motion. I'm going to non-public. Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Let's see, I don't want to get busy signing some things here. Here's the weak--